Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Man, if we can have a crowd like this at every meeting, it would be phenomenal. I would like to ask that you all please silence your cell phones and/or any other electronic devices. I ask that if you are here and you are going to speak during citizen comments, that you please sign in on the, in the back in the foyer. They have a sign-in sheet because once we collect that, we will not be having anybody added to it. So I will can collect that at the consent agenda part of the meeting and we will announce how that part of the agenda works when we get to it. The prayer tonight will be by Reverend Blanks of New Era Baptist Church located on Highway 90 here in Goche, Mississippi. And the pledge of allegiance will be by Councilman Rusty Anderson of Ward 4. Please stand.
[Inaudible]
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson, and thank you, Reverend Blanks. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy?
In American overlords, Congress, and if you have a revised agenda, um, an added two additional items and questions.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have a motion by council to approve the revised agenda order of approval with the two added consent agenda items?
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by our city manager, Ms. Paula Yancy.
Our national day of prayer will be Thursday, May 4th, starting at 12:00 PM at City Hall Chambers. Our Goche Farmers Market will begin the second Saturday of every month beginning this month in May through September, starting at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at George Martin City Park. And American Legion Post 1992 family will host a Memorial Day Avenue of Flags Ceremony on May 29th, starting at 11:00 AM in Beverly City.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and we have a proclamation of the National Safe Boating Week. We have with us this evening some representatives from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, and that would be Libby Deseray, Des and Luke. If y'all would please come to the front to accept the proclamation. City of Goche proclamation, a proclamation recognizing National Safe Boating Week, whereas for over 100 million Americans from coast to coast are taken to the water and enjoying time together, boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. To the water and enjoying time together, boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing, the U.S. Coast Guard and its state and local safe boating partners encourage boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly with appropriate preparations. And whereas, on an average, 650 people die each year in a boating-related incident in the U.S., of which 75% of these are fatalities caused by drowning and, whereas, the majority of these incidents are caused by the boat equipment or environmental factors but by human error and/or poor judgment. And whereas, a significant number of recreational boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today and had they taken appropriate safety precautions and worn their life jacket. And whereas, we recognize the goals of the National Safe Boating Campaign and proactively supported by the USCG Station Pascagoula. Flatilla 38 of the USCG Auxiliary and our Mississippi Shipbuilding and Maritime Center in the interest of promoting recreational boating safety. Now, therefore, we, Casey Vaughn, Mayor, and the Council of the City of Goche, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May the 20th through May 26th, 2023, National Safe Boating Week in the City of Goche, Mississippi, to reinforce awareness of and attention to important lifesaving skills that can provide our recreational boaters with the knowledge to safely enjoy their boating experience throughout the Mississippi coastal region. And witness whereof, we have until set our hands and cause the seal of the City of Goche, Mississippi, to be affixed on this, the second day of May 2023, Mayor Casey Vaughn, City of Goche, Mississippi. Once again, thank you all for all you do.
I'd just say thank you for supporting National Voting Safety Week. Thank you.
Would you like to say?
No, sir, I think you said a lot.
Y'all will come close and we'll have the council stand behind and the city manager and city attorney join us in our photo.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. That brings us to our business agenda. Business agenda number one, approval of change order number one to add the added alternate one, two additional restrooms for the Town Commons Park Phase Two Amphitheater Project by our city manager, Ms. Paula Yancy.
Yeah, as you'll recall, we awarded the bid on the amphitheater, we awarded the base bid only. We had an alternate for additional restrooms. Fletcher's bid was $625,000 for those additional restrooms. The restrooms are really needed to ensure the premier customer experience, but at the time, we were unsure of our funding, and so we went with the base bid. Fletcher has agreed to honor their price in a change order, and we have received additional funding that I outlined, and I think that you need to go ahead and build the additional restrooms now that our funding is changed.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? If we did, come to the front podium, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Anthony Snow, 2205 Island Drive. I think there's a typo in the AI document G71, the form it states, therefore, the date of substantial completion shall be March 28, 2023, whereas the document is signed in DPO, which is after the submitted completion date. Should that date be sometime in 2024?
Yes, I'm sure of that.
Yes, I'm sure it's the typo. Okay. But I saw everything was signed, and it clearly says adding 30 days and dates listed as 2023.
Which day you talking, what are you talking about?
It's talking about the actual change order.
On the actual change order.
By the bottom.
All right.
It says time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll have that corrected, thank you.
I think that was all.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Any other comments? Do we have a motion from council, approve a change order number one to add the added alternate one, two additional restrooms for the Town Commons Park Phase Two Amphitheater Project?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman George, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes. Um, so why is it priced at this, that this amount?
Because when we received bids, we had a base bid, which is what's going in right now. We had an additive alternate for additional restrooms, then additive alternate for concession stand, and each price, each additive alternate was priced separately.
So this the concession stand and?
No, this is not the concession stand. This is additive alternate one only, the additional restrooms.
Okay, is it like a labyrinth or something?
You would think so, now that it's because it's fine free and it includes men and women's restrooms, so it adds 10 additional restrooms to what we already have.
Right. Anything else?
No other questions.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
I think it's going to be a great enhancement to the improvements we're already making. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
I just want to thank our city manager, city staff, city engineer, and our partners. We are lucky to have a local contractor, Fletcher Construction, who's doing their best to keep this project on task and get it completed on the time that they stated it would, even with rain delays. So thank them for their hard work and their employees. So we have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman College, all in favor?
Motion carries.
That brings us to business agenda item number two, approval of the docket of claims. They've been provided to us digitally by the link to the board in our email, and also they were online to the citizens attached to the agenda for tonight's meeting by our city clerk. And so that is the presentation. Do we have any public comments on the docket of claims? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
I'll make a motion to approve the docket of claims, provided that all entries there are, are true, correctly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes. Um, so why is it priced at this, that this amount?
Because when we received bids, we had a base bid, which is what's going in right now. We had an additive alternate for additional restrooms, then additive alternate for concession stand, and each price, each additive alternate was priced separately.
So this the concession stand and?
No, this is not the concession stand. This is additive alternate one only, the additional restrooms.
Okay, is it like a labyrinth or something?
You would think so, now that it's because it's fine free and it includes men and women's restrooms, so it adds 10 additional restrooms to what we already have.
Right. Anything else?
No other questions.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
I think it's going to be a great enhancement to the improvements we're already making. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
I just want to thank our city manager, city staff, city engineer, and our partners. We are lucky to have a local contractor, Fletcher Construction, who's doing their best to keep this project on task and get it completed on the time that they stated it would, even with rain delays. So thank them for their hard work and their employees. So we have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, approval of the docket of claims. They've been provided to us digitally by the link to the board in our email, and also they were online to the citizens attached to the agenda for tonight's meeting by our city clerk. And so that is the presentation. Do we have any public comments on the docket of claims? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
I'll make a motion to approve the docket of claims, provided that all entries there are, are true, correctly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda this evening, and the first part of that will be to discuss citizen comments. And before we allow those citizen comments, I want to ask if anybody signed up, everybody has signed up on here, and if your subject was not related to a social media post or anything like that, not made on the city website, I ask that you come ahead to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. I want to reiterate to the council that has, we have no information than the public has concerning the matter on a Facebook post. This is not a result of the action concerning the City of Goche, rather a personal post. The council has taken only action that is legally available to, which has condemned the content of the remarks regardless of the source. I want to make it clear that we have not blamed any one person for these comments. I have the press release up here with me, if anybody wants to see it, and it purportedly made by Councilman Anderson. And Councilman Anderson denied making the comments and states he was hacked. It also acknowledged that Councilman Anderson was contacting Facebook to obtain proof of his being hacked. If it could not be obtained, then the council and all of us, sign the press release, requested that he resign. I want to make it clear that we legally, the City of Goche, the city council, cannot remove another councilman from office. While this is not a city issue, we understand the implications and the impact on the citizens. Therefore, we will offer the opportunity for the public to express themselves regardless regarding the matter. By ordinance of the City of Goche, all comments will be limited to three minutes. Councilman at large, Councilman College, will be the timekeeper this evening of three minutes. When it gets one minute, he's going to hold up a number one. When it's three minutes, he's going to nudge me or say three, and I will hit the gavel, and that will be the end of your commenting, and you can go nicely, have a seat if you would like. We will conduct our meeting in a fashionable manner. We are not going to be here to go back and forth. We're not going to comment back to any comment because it is an opportunity for you to speak and say how you feel or whatever, and then you can sit down, and we will hear what you have to say. But it's not going to be a back and forth deliberating trial of anything this evening. I ask that everybody be mindful of, we are allowing you to speak on a non-government issue relating to the City of Goche. Okay, any citizen comments not relating to the Facebook post? Come state your name, address, and you have three minutes, non-related.
Yeah, I'm Richard Myers, I'm on Homestead, on the Rose Project. I noticed two or three times they dug up pipe through there, because they had, through something wheel, I don't know what it is. But when they do, the pipe's half full of dirt. Is there going to be any kind of inspection of that pipe so by the time it's through, we don't have drainage systems already plugged up?
Yes, sir.
I know y'all probably can't ask to check and make sure that somebody wants to inspect the, oh, drain?
Yes, we'll have to be inspected, and it's not a health project. When we do the walkthrough, so go ahead.
I noticed the same thing. It's like, I see them digging pipes up, and when they put the pipes back down, it's, it has dirt in it as they're putting the pipe back down.
Well, the ones they dig up, they're half full of dirt, they try to knock some out of it out, you know, and the ones that are not been dug up, they, they probably half full, I don't know.
I'll reach out to our?
You know, four little paper rolls, and then go, oh, no, we can't do enough of that. It makes me regret.
It would be, I'll reach out to our architect.
The city staff will address it with the contractor and the engineering firm who maintains the contract. Thank you.
Anthony Snow, 2205 Island Drive, dealing with that also, as of February 7th, there were 163 working days for that project out of the 279. What is the number of working days now?
We'll be glad to, we'll respond to you with an email to that, the city staff.
Okay. Back in December 2022, I provided a light survey for the city. Within that document, I clearly showed that it was five light poles along Highway 90 that were completely missing, one of, one of which has been missing since March of 2021. What is the status replacing those poles and thus providing better lighting along that corridor?
I can assure you that some of them were insurance claims, so we're writing on that, and they have, some have been ordered, to my knowledge. Ms. Shancy, do you have anything else to add?
We ordered, I believe, three, four weeks ago.
So they've been ordered?
Takes a while.
And lastly, also presented in December 2022 was information regarding missing aluminum school crossing sign in median of Highway 90, heading west from Oak Street. Since that time, the pole has been replaced with a sign that is still missed.
I've been in contact with them, they're the ones that provided that sign, and they assured me that it's going to be here. I'm waiting for them to bring it and have it erected.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Was that the only comments you're making this evening? I'm marking you off the.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, hold on, Mr., go ahead, Mr. Malone.
Uh, well, I'll give you.
State your address, Mr. Malone, so that clerk can hear it.
1313 Hickory Hills Drive. Uh, two things, one, uh, thank my alderman, Beyonce, for helping us out in the situation up here in our area, where we had no streetlights at all. Uh, I think we hit Martin's block, that's after, they built the Donald General and all that sidewalks, and then people walking through and from at night, they have no light. And, uh, Paul Donkey, and he got on it, and now it looks like daylight up there, along that area by my fence all the way up, and then one another night, it probably should be basically, a lot north of me. But it really likes the area, and you can see people, and you see people walking back and forth down, and actually, guys who ride the bikes at night, riding around, they no longer do that, as you can see. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you for that. I just made the request, that was Clearwater and the city boys. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, my alderman. That's, that's great. Um, my other issue is really a complaint, and something the city should take at heart. There's absolutely no recreation in Hickory Hills, which is a large, a larger part of Goche. You don't have a basketball hoop, you don't have a tennis court, you don't have a swimming pool, you have zero. How could you treat your children this way? I mean, it's like you act like, no, no one. I've never lived in a city like that, and I've been all over the world. We have to do something to give these children some recreation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. And I just want to update you, Mr. Malone, Councilman College did do a rendering art that he provided and worked with the city staff, and we did get some legislative funding to redo the Buddy Davis Park, so it will be coming here in the future, so.
No, we didn't, no. We submitted it for.
We submitted it for funding, and also we have grants we've applied for to do the Buddy Davis Park.
Yeah, we did not receive the funding for Martin Park.
The city procured an engineering firm to do a formal rendering, and we included in our priorities package for this year's legislative session. Unfortunately, that was the one thing on our list that got cut this year, which was very, you know, disheartening to me, but we're not going to stop, we're going to continue to search funding, and we're going to be tapping on our legislators again for future funding.
We might try outside all the reasons.
And they did also tell us, Mr. Malone, they would help us try to get some other funding if they found other paths and ways around it. They, even though it was cut, they would try to help us in any way to try to find the funding.
We've done a wrong mess, but we figured it's going to run about $1.7 million to put that in, you know, and I'll talk to you about this, where we got the two tennis courts, two basketball courts, a splash pad, a playground area, along with additional drainage and parking along there. We're just in the process of getting the funding. I said the rendering's done, we have an engineering firm that's ready to jump on it the moment we give them the go.
One of the things you might try to do is draw up private agents, private sector, and not just wait for government, because government's very sore and efficient. So try to go out and, 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 you know, they might give you half million dollars. But this is all the people out there working, their company, you gotta go to the private sector. I think that a lot of houses in the mayor of Chicago, who went to the private sector, a lot.
Mr. White, you're very generous, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments not related to the social media post? Any other comments not related to the social media post? Okay, if it's not related, it's not related to that?
No.
Okay, state your name and address.
My name's Sarah from, address, uh, 2230 South, um, I just want to make a comment on the Martin Block project. I've, since the project started, it's kind of been handling a little rough as far as debris and stuff flying around. At the point, I had came and spoke to everybody, pretty much sitting here, Rusty, I spoke to you over a year ago, and then again, a few months back, Paula, I spoke with you, I spoke with Clearwater. My problem is that when the city purchased those homes that they knocked down, they own those parcels now. I have two properties on that street, and in your ward, Mr. Anderson, I have multiple properties there. I picked up multiple properties that have been on a vacant. So at this point, I've come and I've done my due diligence to talk to everybody, the city's property is four feet over my fence line. So what I came to ask is that the city cut their own property and maintain their own property. This has been over a year battle, I've came and done my due diligence. The last time that I came here, I was assaulted by the code officer on camera. I've had to seek counsel, and I've, and this isn't what a property investor should have to go through with the code department when I've picked up houses on the vacant. I've picked up problem houses that Goche Police Department couldn't stop in that neighborhood. I'm right there in that neighborhood, most of the properties that I get are sweat equity, so I have to go in and fix them up. We have to run the people in the community that you can't run off. And when I come here and I look for guidance over a year, and I went through my due diligence with everybody, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Anderson, Paula, all I asked for was an answer. And on camera, in return, what I got was assault and theft of my property. And I would just ask, if anybody wants to call my bluff, let's look at the camera. There's also ethics violations that I have 100% proof of. If anybody wants to call my bluff, let's sit down and talk in front of somebody that can regulate the wrong, because it's just not a minority person we make fun of, it's our minority leaders and developers that are picking up the communities that we treat like garbage when they come in. When I come in, I have a conversation, did you laugh at me, Mr. Anderson, right out here on the city steps, at the council meeting? Richard, you know I stayed out there that day. I express my opinion to you when I leave. I pay more taxes on property than anybody sitting on this council board right now. And I'm treated like the bottom of my shoe. You guys have a wonderful day, you know what it feels like to be discriminated against? You know what it feels like to be discriminated against? You guys have seen this, and this isn't the first time. It's the first time that a mayor is willing to be a man enough to talk about it, and I applaud him for that.
Sir, I was remembering laughing at you. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Remo, sir. And Ms. Shancy and I will be contacting you to set up a meeting to discuss the right-of-way issue of, aboutting your property there, up in the subdivision.
If you contact Mr. Rogers, you want him to line it up just like the last meeting, we lined up when?
We will.
Police on camera threw stuff away. We have a lot of videos that y'all will look.
Okay, we will contact you regarding that.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, Ms. Shepherd?
I'm Shepherd, 1401 Cattina. I just wanted to, looking at what Mr. Malone was talking about, the, the stuff for the children, I went to Gulf Shores last week, and I stayed with my girlfriend. They've got a fort that they have down in a community park, it's a fort, and it's like an agility, is that the word, agility fort, you know, where you walk on tires, you pull on ropes, and it's got little forks, you know, that they can go through and stuff. I think something like, and I took pictures and stuff, and it had, the kids were involved in it, they put their handprints on, hang, you know, for the concrete and stuff. It might be something to look at, if you want to put a big, you know, park or something for kids, because it is pretty neat.
Okay, yeah, an agility park.
An agility park, yeah. It was, it's really neat. And also getting back to the lights. I'm the only one on Cattina, I'm the only one on LaGrange that pays, I pay for my own lights. There's no other streetlights down LaGrange, and I really think the one that's there is, belongs to the city, but I'm paying for it. And if y'all can maybe put some more lights back in that area, because that's where we had a lot of theft, people are coming in and stealing and stuff, so that's all I ask.
Okay, so we'll take that under consideration. Okay, anything else not regarding the Facebook? Come to the podium and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Tommy Johnson, 1624 H. and R.
Another thing, it's too thick packed up in there. But I talked to Mr. Gillette, I emailed Paula back in August, and you emailed your maintenance department, and they said they would schedule it, but they never did schedule. It never was done. So I went back three weeks ago.
1624 Hays.
I went back three weeks ago, and I was going to see you, you weren't there, and the lady working there told me that they were too busy, and that I was responsible for some of this stuff. I understand that. I cleaned the ditches out myself. But I, I, I can't afford to buy that machine and clean coves. I can't afford it.
No, you don't have to.
And the water's over the road, real close to my house. I have some pictures, but I don't want to see them right now. So I just want to try to get something resolved here.
Okay. If you will give Mr. Johnson, if you will give the lady in the pink shirt your phone number, we will contact you regarding that issue. Okay, she's got a pic. Thank you for coming, Ms. Shepherd.
I'm confused about who I'm going to contact and invite.
Mr. Frederick.
My name is Leonard Frederick. I live at 1605 Garden Lane here in Gochay. I've been a citizen, full-time citizen for 21 years. I've owned my property since 1992. We have an issue. It's a whole issue. I've got some handouts I'd like to give to each one of you. One for the record, and also one for the city attorney.
If you don't need to pass them out, I'll pass them over. I don't want to take away your three minutes. Pass them out.
I just want to point out, first of all, so the audience can know what I just passed out. It's a Supreme Court ruling in case by Martin Whelan versus the City of Gochay and David Vindich. I was there the day that the truck pulled up to unload this building, which nobody knew was going up. I won't say anymore about that. But Mr. Whelan was the immediate neighbor, and he filed a lawsuit against the City of Gochay and David Vindich because we had no due process. We had no idea it was going. Okay, I'd like to point out a few things. On page number one, the date of this Supreme Court judgment is 2/20/2019. That's when the Supreme Court ruled on this. What's today's date? Also, if you would, turn to page two. Paragraph three, it says, "We, the Supreme Court, reserved the decisions of, reversed the decisions of the Court of Appeals and the Trial Court." Mr. Whelan went to court, Chancery Court. They ruled against it, and he appealed it. They went against it, and he took it to the Supreme Court. I won't go through everything, but, uh, page eight has some highlighted things on it. Page 13, but the main thing is page 17. Page 17, paragraph 24, it says, "The city erred in its interpretation of their own building code." Paragraph 24, "We reversed the judgments of the Court of Appeals of the Jackson County Chancery Court, and amnd the county back to the court for further proceedings consistent with this opinion." I don't know why it takes six or seven years to get this undone, but obviously, that's what it takes when the city is in litigation against them. Appreciate you having me.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Any other citizen comments non-related to Facebook? Okay, we'll go down the list. First is Mr. Tyler Cox.
Mr. Mayor.
Board.
My name is Tyler Cox. I work at Taylor and Cox Law Firm in Pascagoula. You may have seen me this morning getting pulled over in Gochay for speeding. I appreciate your officers' diligence in making sure my rate of speed is at the appropriate amount. I represent Rusty Anderson, and, um, the board want to prove this hacked Facebook. Well, I provided it here, and I'll make sure the audience is able to see that after this. As you can see, and as you know, on April 16th, an inappropriate and abhorrent comment was posted on Mr. Anderson's Facebook account around 6:30 that evening. What we have for Facebook is a sample of session updates that happened the day of. As you can see here, on April 16th at 9:34, Mr. Anderson accessed his Facebook account from Gochay, Mississippi. And you can tell that by his home IP address. Now, I blacked out the last three numbers of his IP address for privacy reasons. However, you can see that he accessed that Facebook at 9:34 a.m. His Facebook was logged into again that evening at 6:28 p.m. by someone in Laurel, Mississippi. Now, we asked Facebook to provide us the name of the owner of that IP address. However, Facebook would not oblige that ask. They said that we had to have a subpoena, and we do not have subpoena power in something that is not an open court case. But as you can tell clearly right here, this IP address accessed Mr. Anderson's Facebook account at the same time that post was made. You asked for an IP address, here it is. So I take of what I had a lot of comments prepared within my three minutes. But I do want to say just quickly that I am so encouraged by these citizens being here today and taking part in our process that we have in the city of Gochay. I know no review. I know Mr. George, Mr. Vaughn, and of course, Mr. Anderson. But I also know Mr. Curly right here. Let me tell you something, that is a good man. Mr. Curly Clark is a good man. We may be on opposing sides of this issue. However, I do respect him being here, and I appreciate him being here. And I know we have people like that in Gochay. Gochay's going to be okay. And I appreciate y'all letting me talk. Thank y'all for being here. Thank y'all for having me. Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Curly Clark.
Good evening.
Mr. Malone, please state your address, please.
Curly Clark, President of Mostland County NAACP, and a property owner here in the great city of Gochay. Mayor Vaughn and fellow council members, we're here to see because of the alleged racist remarks made by Ward Four Councilman Rusty Anderson. You know, I won't repeat the disrespectful comments as to not further leave the bad taste in our mouth. He says it wasn't him. He said his account was hacked. However, he offers insufficient proof in our view. He denies that he is a racist, yet his social media persona amplifies his true character. His cohorts have stated that he is not that kind of person. However, his words are indicative of how he truly feels about black people and indicative of his lack of integrity. If he had nothing to hide, he would quickly allow a review of his Facebook and Instagram accounts, thus showing full transparency. In the absence of true and full transparency, proving his page was hacked. We, the NAACP, and request and support the request of you and the other fellow council members for his resignation. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, that brings us Mr. Billy Booth.
Billy Booth, 1405 Hillcrest Street. For clarity, are we able to ask a question? I wasn't clear about what you said about.
We just hear statements from you. We're not going to comment about it.
All right. I greet you as a representative of citizens of United Gochay and as a Ward Four resident. And for the record, it's just been said, I want to make it known that I'm not here for political reasons, but for personal reasons. I have a few questions for my councilman, Councilman Anderson. I'll say them publicly. Since you cannot respond, I will give them to you. Preferably, you will respond during your comments. First question I would like to know is, when and how did you find out that the post was on your Facebook page? When and how? Then I want to know, how did you obtain this evidence that you are presenting today? I'm assuming, I'm thinking you're saying email. Did it come to your personal email? Did it come to the city email? Would you be willing to forward that email to me or us and allow us to see this rather than this screenshot stuff you got here? Councilman Anderson, I've got to tell you, over these past two weeks, I've asked myself over and over, what would I do if I was in your shoes? And this happened to me. And every time I asked myself that question, I came up with a different answer than what you did. I'm very disappointed. I'm very saddened and hurt in the way you handled this situation. And even on today, how you're not, I, I want to see if you're really willing to put forth the full truth. Because I want it to be on record, something I've told you in private, and that is, the truth will come out. As it relates to social media and electronic communication, there is what's known as a digital footprint. Just as you put your foot in the sand on the scene. When you do a digital electronic communication, whether it's deleted, that information still can be retrieved and traced. So the truth will come out. I plead with you to give the whole truth. For as a devout Catholic as you are, member of the faithful, you fully understand how God values truth and despises deception. I plead with you to give the whole truth, because no matter how much good you have done in the past, no matter how many potholes you have fielded, this here will be your legacy. And for years to come, your children and your grandchildren will hear of what you've done, but this will be your shining.
Now, now, let's keep it, let's keep calm. Next, it's, it looks like maybe Michael, I can't read the writing. It looks like it's.
Michael.
Micah North? Or something, W I T H, maybe? H E A T A L? Or N I C? Okay, we'll move on to the next, and then if you were on here and I didn't call you, I will, we'll let you speak if you say your name is the, the name written here. Richard Whitehurst.
I was talking on the pipe.
Okay. Okay. Well, everybody that was it, that had signed in. But you already spoke. That's why I asked you on.
We weren't speaking on the non-related.
But, Ms. Shepherd, we weren't speaking three minutes on each topic.
Well, no, I don't think that's right, because you have a city topic and then.
Okay, I will allow you to speak and Mr. Remoza. Anybody else that did not sign this sheet? Mr. Reverend Blanks, were you?
Reverend Moore Ross.
Anybody else? Because we're allowing two more, and that will be the end. On this topic, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Shepherd.
Mr. Curly, I mean, no disrespect.
We're not going to address Ms. Shepherd. We're not addressing our citizens here, or we're talking to the board and stating your comments.
1401 Katia Drive. I want to speak about the, the Facebook post. I know each and every one of y'all, except Mr. Jackson. I don't know him that well. I'd be standing here, I'd be standing here for each and every one of y'all, including our city manager. So I'm not taking sides. I'm done running for a long time since I was about five years old. I'm never known to talk that way or speak that way. But to be accused of it and to be asked to resign before he can even prove innocence just really goes beyond my comprehension. I, I don't understand it. And to say you're going to stand by what you signed, and you were asking him to resign. First of all, Rusty Anderson, Councilman Anderson, works for the city. I mean, he works for the people, not for any of y'all. So you can't really ask him to resign, which Mayor Vaughn's already said that. Second, the way this all came out, there's some gentleman by the name of Marcus Hughes. If you go back and look at his pages, he is the filthiest talking human being. He shows twerking on his Facebook page. He called all of the city council rednecks. And then today, he posted, "Was the City of Gochay anything stupid?" Now, that kind of language on a Facebook page, I mean, it's all over. I mean, it's everywhere. And to say that Mr. Anderson said a word, that man's got it all over his page. So I want to know the difference between, and I don't mean any disrespect, between nigger and the rrrrr word. I want to know what the difference is.
But we are not going to use, Ms. Shepherd, that N-word. Hold up. Hey. Calm down.
Because he has it all over his page.
We're not, please refrain from using the N-word in our chambers.
I understand that, and you know me better, but.
We're not. Hey, enough.
I had my piece to say, if y'all want to speak.
Not, Ms. Shepherd. Mr. Remoza. Hey, calm down. If you speak and you're not on here, the police chief will ask his officers to remove you from the chambers. We are not, we're all here. We all have a right to say something, but we're all being amicable, and we're all are not going to be defensive in this room. Go ahead, Mr. Remoza. Come to the address podium, state your first, last name, and your address.
Sorry, Remoza, um, I have a different address. 1621 Hickory Hill. I got one. Here you go. What I'd just like to say as a citizen is that when I come in here and I listen to what the mayor said on news, and he said he wanted Mr. Anderson to prove, and I'm assuming like in the court, you proved beyond a reasonable doubt that this wasn't me, I was hacked. And there's a lot of data that can prove that. There's a digital imprint like he suggested. There's other metadata that would also comply with your story. If you serve as a citizen, if you want to prove to the citizen, especially to the minorities that fully feel like that, you have a bias against them, that you didn't do this, you will release this other metadata where your phone was at, where, if you spent the credit card that night. But what I would like to say about this pretty prop right here that was set up for everybody to see is that there's nothing that validates this. I could type this up at home, Excel, Microsoft Word. I can do a lot of things and come to a court. And I'm not suggesting that he did. What I am suggesting that if anything could happen in America, it could be CNN. So in the event that some. in the event that someone has to prove beyond a reasonable doubt, anyone in here that's been in the courtroom knows that this wouldn't be a reasonable doubt. But this is a pretty spreadsheet and blown up so you can see it. Now, what I would ask for is the metadata, and that we could release it if you wanted to subpoena, you might get subpoenaed because it's not an active investigation, but if everybody agreed, we can release it, and the truth can be out. And that's very simple. I also know that blocking this IP address doesn't protect him. Your information's on the Jackson County web portal. I know I could look up everything you own and everything like that, so telling me that this is for his protection is irrelevant. Aside from that, you're a public figure in our city. Your data's available to us, just like mine's available to you. So with that being said, I would suggest that we get some, a judge or somebody that will look at it and say, yeah, this is beyond a reasonable doubt, that this was a criminal case or anything else, we be there. This other IP address, I can back to it. You give me the IP address, I'll tell you where it's at. So don't say that this can't be done. This is very simple. The fact is, do we want the truth out, or do we want to continue to try to hold our power? This job only pays a thousand dollars a month. What is it that a thousand dollars a month makes you want to, for a power grab? It's the money behind it and the ethics policies that are being broken on contracts behind it. I might just be the dumb black kid from down the street, or I might have a little bit of knowledge. You have a good day.
That brings us to Mr. Fredericks. And I know you already said it, Mr. Fredericks, but we used to take your address again.
My name is Leonard Frederick. I live at 1605 Garden Lane in Goche, Mississippi. Been a resident here full-time for 21 years. I've owned my house for 30. When I came here tonight, it was supported entirely differently. I first heard about this on the news last night at 10:00, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here because of what I've already said. I'm soon to be 74. I was raised by my grandparents. Now, my grandfather was 74, he wants to quote himself, he says, "Believe nothing you hear and half of what you see." And I'm telling you, in today's world, I don't know if you can believe half what you see. I was in the military 35 years. I'm on YouTube every day checking on the Ukraine war. And there's more propaganda and false videos on that, on YouTube, and I can take it out than most people can. I don't know what you did, if you did it. All I know is that don't believe what you hear and don't believe what you see. We're going to have to verify. And the other thing I'd like to say, I was a school teacher for 10 years. I taught right here in Moscow. I was a shop teacher. Then I fell off the curb for one year before I went off the top of the train in the Air Force. Don't judge a man or anyone by the color of their skin. Judge them by the content of their character. Thank you.
Chief Clutch, will you take this and pass it to the deputy clerk for the minutes? That brings us to our council comments. Councilman George?
I just want to say I appreciate everybody being here, regardless of the reason. Appreciate the participation. We need more participation. Need more people at our future council meetings. I hate that we're having to deal with what we're dealing with on behalf of something that's not city-related and not council-related. We have to sit up here together, that's where our seats are. But that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
Yes. So, I mean, I had something else planned to say, but it seemed like things had changed. So, to the comment that was allegedly said, see, the most important thing is not the N-word, but the part that said about our lives was the most important, potent part. Wishing death upon us was the most important part. That's what we should have reflected on and should have thought more of, because many people try to wish death upon our people and get away with it if they can. But wish death upon our people is the comment that was made, that we should be focusing on. And I understand, you know, there's always name-calling, this, that, and the other, but to say, to wish death upon my people, that's a bitter one to take. No more comment.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat?
Well, let's see. I want to say what Casey Long earlier said, that I wish we had this kind of crowd in our audience every night. And exactly tonight, the number of people that came in here and did strictly comments on council business, I applaud you. I would like to see more of that, okay? For what's going on with the social media, I have to agree with the gentleman back there, don't believe everything you read and don't believe everything you see. I don't like that post. I think it was deplorable. I have to agree with Mr. Jackson about eliminating lives. The only person that can eliminate a life is yourself, okay, through your age, of living a long life. People, I'm 81 years old, and I plan on living to 100, okay? And I hope every, each and every one of you in this audience tonight has the opportunity to live as long as I have or longer and enjoy every day of it. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman College?
Yes, that comment was boring, awful, terrible, pull at the heart, absolutely disgusting. I'd like to say more expertise, or say some expertise about it, but it's not going to help anything. How anybody could put that on there is beyond me. It breaks the heart. But at the same time, I appreciate each and every one of you for coming out here and supporting us, speaking your mind, letting us know how you feel. And lastly, and I know I tell Councilman Jackson this all the time, I appreciate everything he does for this city. That gentleman is the most, in my opinion, is the most outstanding, most moral individual on this council. He loves this city. He went in with a vision, and things that took me two terms to get done, he got done in one. Baco Park was his baby, is his baby, and he is there every single night to make sure that it's taken care of. And I can't applaud him enough for everything he does. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. I ordered my Facebook files, and I received them, and I turned them over to my attorney. And I allowed him to research them and look at them and to prove that I did not make such a racist third comment. I'm glad, I'm hoping the city of Goche could understand this, and myself personally, I'm going to put this behind us. I do not condone or use that type of language. I'm not an IT specialist, and all I know is that I was hacked by an IP address out of Laurel, Mississippi during that timeframe, which I allowed my attorney to prove for me, because, like I said, I'm not an IT specialist. I was never in Laurel and have witnesses that were with me from 2:30 until 6:30 in the afternoon. This was very hurtful to have the city leadership rushed to judgment and demand my resignation without time allowed for my Facebook records to arrive. I ask for your prayers for myself and prayers for the city as we move forward together. Pray for him.
We're not having outspoken remarks. Councilman Alvin?
Obviously, we don't agree with the sentiments of the comments that were made, don't agree with it at all. I was raised in a military background, I was raised, when I went into the military, I was raised to see camouflage. I don't hold these types of grudges towards anybody, or ill will, or prejudice towards any color or any race. I'm of minority status myself. But every man in here is subject to accountability and has the right to due process. I can't sit here and condemn this man or glorify anything he's got, was supposedly said, at all. But every single one of you have the right to due process. If in the end he's found guilty and it can be proved without a reasonable doubt that he did it, by all means, I would suggest he step down, and I would think that would be the thing he would do. But he has that right, just as anybody else in this courtroom or this chamber, to be proven guilty before being condemned and title with this for the rest of your life as a racist. And that's all I have to say.
I'm going to be conferring with my attorney, and we're going to discuss this some more and see how to move forward, and I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. You know, tonight is not easy, but if you came early, I want to congratulate our Goche High School choir for coming here this evening before our meeting and singing to the council and to the city administration. They came earlier during the week to sing to the city staff. So we're blessed with a bunch of talent here in the city of Goche. And it's always great when you have guests who come and record your meetings and join you this evening. So we thank all of you for attending. Also, I want to thank our city staff for all your hard work to continue to keep our city moving in a positive manner and also working on the beautification and economic development for our city. With that being said, we have farmer's market, as you heard, coming up. We thank the city staff. We also want to thank Goche Pride. Yesterday, our benches arrived that they generously purchased and donated. That the city staff, our Parks and Rec Director, Trustee Bilbo, will be working with her staff to get them installed as soon as possible. So we thank her and her staff, so you can enjoy them when you go to the splash pad. As this weekend, there was standing room and sitting on blankets, because there literally was not enough benches and/or picnic tables. And I repeat, there was not enough benches or picnic tables at a park. So what a great problem to have in our city. Our youth are utilizing our parks, and that is a great thing, and we have nice parks. I've been asked by numerous residents and city about since City Councilman Anderson's most recent press release, and I want to tell you that this council never blamed anyone. We listened to Councilman Anderson, and we wanted him to be able to speak, and we wanted the citizens to allow him to be able to get his information and speak, and we did not accuse him. So people come into the podium and stating that we accused him, that is false. I encourage you to go read the press release again. It was not only signed by myself, but it was signed by all the board, except for Councilman Anderson. Okay? So just so you know, it wasn't just Mayor Vaughn asking, we all agreed to this press release. And I repeat, it is on our Goche Facebook page. You can go get the press release, okay? I also want to say, we did not ask for an IP address, and we're not here to deal with, this is not a court issue. We asked him because he said he was getting proof from Facebook before the press release. So that is why we allowed that to happen. He stated that to us when we reached out to him. I personally checked on Councilman Anderson on Sunday evening when I got the first email from a citizen. I checked with him also and spoke with him on Monday morning. So we have communicated with Councilman Anderson, and we do want him to have due process and let him be transparent. And we are praying for his children, wife, him, his daughter, I went to school with her, love her to death, her children. It is a shame, unfortunately, in our positions, we have things happen. I've been there. I've been in Councilman Anderson's shoes and been slung through the mud. If anybody can sympathize with him, it's Mayor Vaughn, with fake stuff and everything else. So I've been there, so he has a right to speak. I didn't have a right to speak when it was done to me. I took the high road, and sometimes that's what you have to do. But here's what I'm saying, I am not an IT person, nor am I the prolific in all the ins and outs of Facebook. I am the, I do think that the proof presented tonight is inconclusive. The truth of the matter is that Mr. Anderson, and God knows the truth, the rest of us may never know the certainty. However, everyone has the opportunity for freedom of speech and the public forum concerning this matter. I want to say that this matter has not been an easy one and not good for our citizens, the council, or the city. Like it or not, there is nothing else legally the public or the council can do concerning this matter. I am hopeful that the citizens will take pride in knowing that the remark on the Facebook does not reflect this council or the city employees or the citizens of Goche, Mississippi. It is not how we treat each other or those visitors who come here. I hope that everyone will move the city forward in a positive manner and continue to go out and tell the positive that is going on in the city of Goche. The positive projects, the energy we have, the small businesses that we have that continue to bring increased sales tax to our city. Go taunt our small businesses. Go support them and thank them for investing here during tough times, when it's hard to find employees that want to work. And they stay committed to the citizens of Goche and our visitors. So I wish you all the best this evening, and God bless you all. That brings us to Ms. Shanty's comments. Do you have any? Our city clerk is on the phone, Mr. Montgomery, do you have any comments? Our deputy clerk is here, Mr. Dickerson, you have any comments? Thank you. I appreciate you for all you do also. Mr. Danos, our city attorney, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Once again, we thank all of you for coming. Hopefully, more will start coming and getting active to hear about our projects, so when you hear about the rumors on the street about them, you know they're fake news. As we heard tonight, there's fake news. So, I ask for a motion to recess until May 16, 2023, at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries, we're recessed.